You ready?
We're ready.
Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, September 13th, 2023, and it's a little after six o'clock. We're here in the city council chambers at 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have one public hearing this evening regarding a development at 64 North Brookwood Avenue. Let's do a rule call, please, sir.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Moller.
Present.
We have a quorum.
I'm offering a prayer by my son, Mayor Michael Ryan, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Lord, continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams. Please continue to protect our police officers and firefighters and keep them out of harms way. Continue to bless our city, our state, and our country. And as we reflect on the anniversary of September 11th, let us not forget the lives that were lost. Let us not forget those police officers and firefighters who died trying to save lives. Let us not forget September 11th, 2001.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Mayor Ryan for mentioning nine eleven. Firefighters and police took their assignments of trying to save others, and I learned that most of the folks below the impact of the planes, a vast majority, like ninety percent of them, got out of there, which is amazing when you consider that structure is, I don't know how many stories, what was it, ninety maybe or something like that, some incredible number. So, thank you for mentioning that. Okay, we have some special presentations this evening. First one is firefighter Samantha Briggs. And come on up. I'd like to be joined by Public Safety Director Scott Scramazy, Fire Chief Tom Eichelberger, and Deputy Chief Garland. You good? It's hot. Great. Obviously, I know nothing about fitness, but somebody here really, really does, and that's our firefighter, our own Samantha Briggs. And before you get a chance to talk, I have to hear these two guys, these three guys, talk about you, okay? Public Safety, I want to go to Deputy Chief Garland first.
All right, thank you for coming. Thanks for the on-duty crews and off-duty firefighters that showed up as well. My name's Matt Garland, and I'm the shift commander for B Shift, which is the shift that Sam works on. She came to us last year in August, so August of '22, and she went to fire school, EMT school, and got on a truck, I believe, the beginning of January of this year. And a little backstory, she was a firefighter in England for nine years, I believe you told me. So she's not a stranger to our business, just a stranger to the United States version of our business. I'm assuming they're similar, little differences here and there, but she got to our firehouse 21 over by the high school and started working, kind of honing her craft, getting back into the mix. And I believe it was February that opened for the CrossFit Games, came open. CrossFit Games are a functional fitness, I guess you would describe it as. If you're not familiar with it, I won't bury the, my terrible explanation, look it up. But, so she was learning her job here, settling in, and training at the same time. So her can-do attitude, her positive attitude, and her willingness to just give her all is, I mean, a testament to everyone. She's great on the shift, everyone likes her, we ask her to talk a lot because she has a British accent, so that's a good time always. But Sam's a great addition to our department, and she started out in her competition against over seventeen thousand people, ended up in the top ten, and then ended up winning the CrossFit Games for her age group, and she's the strongest woman in the world this year. So I just want to congratulate you again, and everyone is very proud of you and our department, and I'll pass it off.
Very well said. I reiterate everything he said, but in all seriousness, we are all very proud of you. We are all very privileged to have you on our department. For those of you that aren't super familiar with the fire service, it can be a very physically demanding job in many different occasions, and so we always try to pride ourselves on being physically fit, and as physically fit as we can possibly be, given our busy work style, busy work life, and home life, and all those good things. And so when, so there's always a level of competitiveness amongst firefighters in general. And then when you have someone of this caliber join your ranks, it just drives the competitiveness up that much more. And the impact that she's had as a, as a brand-new hire in her first year amongst the entire department has been astounding. So we are all very proud of you, and we appreciate that you're here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. So really thrilled to have you. Heck of an accomplishment, and Chief talked about the physical fitness part of it. I see Sam get on the truck, and, I mean, I'd put her up against anyone. And this is a testament to our civil service process that we changed several years ago. Chief Bukai had started some of the changes, and we made additional changes in fire to be able to get someone like this, because ten years ago, we wouldn't have been able to do that for age reasons and having paramedic certifications, so it's, we're able to get a really good group of people. I would be remiss if I didn't say there's police officers and firefighters in the audience, and Councilman Lauer and the mayor mentioned it, with September 12th or September 11th being Monday. But regardless of even that, I just, I want to take time just to thank you all for what you do daily. I don't think the general public has any clue what you do on a daily basis, and the stress that that puts on you and your families, and I just, I wouldn't be comfortable standing up here without personally thanking all of you for what you do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Save yours first. You're a role model for your fellow firefighters, you're a role model for fitness advocates, and you're a role model for all men and women who, I mean, took a chance to come here to this country and to kind of learn a different way maybe of firefighting. So you match all the attributes of what we want in our public safety. Is that correct, you three guys? All right, I'm going to give you a certificate that I want to hear all about cross fitness and what it's like to be number one in anything, because I don't know. City of Hamilton, Ohio, this is firefighter Samantha Briggs. Is hereby awarded the certificate of recognition for her hard work and determination competing in the 2023 CrossFit Games, placing first out of seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-three athletes in the forty to forty-four age group, while being a dedicated member of the Hamilton Fire Department. Sum myself as mayor, if not, should be all members of council, September 13th, 2023. So I'm going to give this to you, I'm going to shake your hand, give this to you, and I want to hear all about this. We all want to hear all about this, okay?
First of all, I'd like to just say it's an honor to receive this. It was ten years ago that I stepped away from firefighting in the UK to pursue a dream of being a professional athlete, but I always knew that I wanted to go back to firefighting, and it was the city of Hamilton that's given me that opportunity to get back to the job that I love doing. I never imagined that I'd be able to work full-time and still compete at a high level, but that's mainly due to the support that I have at home, but then my new family of the fire department here, all of who have been encouraging and willing to swap shifts for me to be able to do all the qualification competitions, and then to actually go and compete on the main stage. Without people who were willing to swap shifts with me and be encouraging and support me at work, it wouldn't have been possible to be a full-time firefighter and still compete at a high level. So nothing is ever won alone, and it's thankful for the emerging team that I'm part of that I was able to achieve that. So thank you for all trusting me to be a firefighter here in Hamilton.
So you're all American, you're all Hamilton, both.
Yeah.
Now, I'm going to keep you hydrated, though, with the world's best tasting water for your future competitions, okay?
Thank you.
Take two. I'd like a real round of applause for this chance as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you have next?
Of course, Dan Jam.
All right. Time for the one and only Scott Smallwood to come up here, with anybody else from Corn Stand Jam who wants to come up here as well. You're going to do more than just hold that sign, aren't you? Okay. Corn Stand Jam, September 30th, 2023.
Why don't you talk about it? Yeah. You got that. I started a Corn Stand Jam in 2019, five years ago. I lost my son to suicide. He loved music, he loved River's Edge. He had schizophrenia, and he was treated here locally. He had a pretty severe case of it, and he had a corn stand over by Flubs. I think some of you may have bought corn from him before. He was twenty-eight years old, I came home from work and found him. Obviously, I'd flipped my life upside down, and I wanted to try to do something to give back, so we started this project, and we're in our fifth year this year. We raised money, we've raised tens of thousands of dollars that we've given out for scholarships at the local high schools and some grade schools where people were in need for tuition. We give money to a lot of agencies, anything to do with mental health or any type of mental disability. Our main sponsor this year is Butler Behavioral Health Services. We've got Children's Hospital that'll be there, it'll be at River's Edge on September 30th, and we got a proclamation last year from Mayor Moller, and we really appreciated that. So tonight, we wanted to come and talk about us a little bit. Scott's going to talk about a children's book that we have, and I brought passes for everyone on council so that hopefully you'll come and support us, and you can, this will give you access to the musicians backstage or whatever. So I'm going to let Scott talk.
So because of Jimmy and his mission, my wife and I, Leah, have volunteered for the last few years, and we've done everything from selling gift baskets to set up to selling beer to getting the word out. So last year, I decided I wanted to do a little bit more, and I enlisted in help of Hannah Tebby, who's a local artist, and we wrote a children's book called Monkey, I am Bugs Night at the Corn Stand Jam. So Monkey is my crazy dog, and Bug is her cat, and the whole premise of the book, basically, it's, it's okay not to be okay. It teaches children that when you're not feeling well, when you're not feeling down, you're feeling sad, it's okay to talk to somebody, and that's all right, because we all go through it. I also wanted to highlight Hamilton and some of our residents, so along the way, the other message in the book is diversity is good, and that just because somebody doesn't look like you, or somebody acts like you, or likes to say things, that doesn't make them bad, and we can all learn from each other. So luckily through, I keep, Hannah's the real talent of this, I just put words on the paper, she's the one that drew all the amazing pictures, we won the National Reader's Choice Award Gold Medal this year in the United States for three-to-seven-year-olds. So the best thing about this, all these books, for every one that we sell, the Corn Stand Jam donates two back to local schools and organizations such as the Boys and Girls Club, and also the Booker T. Washington Center. So we're, we're using this as outreach to help children as well as adults with mental health illness.
It's really a good book. I mean, it does get the message across that it's okay if you're, if you're not feeling okay, but definitely talk to a person, talk to a friend, and it is a fascinating book for young people to read, and I know they get the message, there's no doubt about it. I know they get the message. And Scott and Hannah stepped up, did a book, all the proceeds go to the agencies and the scholarships and the programs that are sponsored by the Corn Stand Jam operation. So, you know, people can talk about mental illness, but they're doing something about it. You, Hannah, Jim, committee Greg's out there, and if you watch this group of volunteers operate, they have fun, they're having fun for a cause, and they're having this jam again for awareness, to raise money, and you know where it goes to, all the proceeds go to our, to our young people. So, and it's great to have an award-winning book writer in town, lives on Dayton Lane, and you're writing another book, aren't you? You're doing another one?
Yeah, our organization and our community wants, in Dayton Lane, wants me to write another one about Myla Hodges and Jennifer Saul, community donations. So I think next year, I want to write that.
Cool. Stay tuned, more quality people from our city. Please go to Corn Stand Jam, donate any way that you can, and I'd like a round of applause for these folks putting on Corn Stand Jam. Time for Rich Engel. I thought you would have walked up there already. What you, what you waiting for, Pittsburgh touchdown or something?
Good lord.
We both could have done better that first weekend, right, Rich?
I was waiting for everyone to be ready, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens of Hamilton. I'm here to prevent the, present the latest engineering update of what's going on. First item is our traffic signal system project update. We again continue to make significant signal timing changes to the High Main Corridor. We have reduced travel times, delay, and overall congestion. Again, this system collects data many, many times per second, so we're continuing to collect and review the data, and then as we collect the data, we see what's going on with the side streets, and we've been making changes on that. In fact, recently, we were notified that there's been some significant backups due to South Monument being closed, so more people are using South Front Street, and we're going to take a look at that traffic signal and increase the southbound timing on Front Street so that we don't get the backups going back onto High Street. The fiber connections has been our biggest issue lately, we've had to get additional equipment ordered and brought in and installed, so we're still working on finalizing the fiber connections. We still are using some cellular connection, so we want to make sure that all the fibers complete, and that'll be done by November, and then after that, we will then go through the EMS preemption process, that will go live then in December. We want to make sure communication is complete before we move on with the EMS preemption. The Fairway Hills subdivision water main and resurfacing, resurfacing project continues to be on schedule. Remember, it started back towards the end of July, and will continue through November. The West Fairway portion from New London to Glenway is complete, and now they're beginning work on Glenway, moving west from West Fairway towards the end of the project. The, following that, the concrete curb sidewalk and drive approaches will begin probably later this year, and then through early spring, and then paving, milling, and resurfacing will occur in 2024. This again is the drawing aerial view of the project itself. Another project that will be beginning early next year will be the Billstein Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The construction documents and drawings have been submitted to, have been completed and submitting on, submitted to ODOT and CSX, we're waiting on their final approval. We expect to bid this project in December. This will require the closure of Billstein Boulevard for the entirety of the project because it's the only bridge, obviously, between Hamilton and Fairfield, and it's over the railroad tracks. So construction will begin in spring and will be complete by the end of next year. We're working closely with the city of Fairfield and Fairfield Schools to make sure that they understand what this closure is going to do for their citizens and for their school system. Thomasville Road reconstruction project, we are still working on obtaining the last couple easements, and once we get that, we expect to bid this project later this month, or in October. The construction will be about twelve months, it will be a full reconstruction of Thomasville Road to standards that will be able to allow the heavy trucks that are using it from Hamilton Enterprise Park and any other future development out in that area. We will be coordinating closely with businesses and residents for their accessibility while construction's ongoing. Train Depot relocation, we've had the committee in place, and I've met three times now. We're focused on developing costs for roof replacement, exterior brick restoration, and then whatever possible window restoration and/or replacement might occur after that. We had a very good presentation by Lithco Restoration Technology recently, and we're still working through that information and getting more information to share with the committee, and we'll have some more details for you in the upcoming months. We've been very successful getting grant funding for the Safe Routes to School project. The Van Hook Phase Two project construction will begin in November. We recently awarded that project to a contractor, and he's going to start within a couple of months, so I'm presuming it'll be in November before he gets started. Wasserman Road is under design with construction expected in 2025, and we recently received word that the Hancock Avenue or Crawford Woods project received a $372,000 award from, grand award from ODOT for that project. Another important project they've been working on is the Water Distribution System Computer Model. This model will be used to identify improvements to correct deficiencies in the water system such as flow capacity or low water pressures. We also will be able to use it to predict necessary improvements needed for new residential, commercial, and industrial development. I think this is important when we have potential projects coming in and asking us what we can provide in terms of water pressure and water flow. Right now, we're using our best engineering judgment, and this will help us to be more exact in what we provide the information. And an important part of this is that the existing water system is going to be tested in mid-September through mid-October, and this will provide additional data in order to calibrate the computer model. This will also have potential impact on our residents because it could discolor the water because we'll be flowing water at a higher velocity than normal through the pipes. So we will be notifying our neighborhoods and our residents through as many resources as possible, social media, to let them know that there may be some discolored water, and it will still be safe to use, not to drink, but safe to use, but we want to make sure that they're aware of that situation. Then here's a photograph of the Pyramid Hill Boulevard Turn Lane that was recently completed, just to let you know for those of you who may not travel that very often. And finally, tonight, many of you have ridden snowplow trucks in your tenure here. Now, I've got a video of a ride-along on the paint truck. I don't know if I can make that. Is there a? No. Yeah, thank you. There you go. So this is the driver who's driving the paint truck as well as doing the painting, and then we have another staff member sitting at the back of the truck putting cones on top of the wet paint. It's a very short video, but I thought you'd be interested. Any questions?
Just a comment, Rich. The number of engineering projects that you and your team work on is enormous. I'm not quite sure how you folks do it, but you also get, and thank you for also getting the grants and the low-interest loans, no-interest loans. I mean, you folks do so many things that maybe we don't know about, but you're doing them, you and your team, we probably take for granted. So, thank, thank you so much, and even the paint ride-along, I mean, you.
It's all about the staff we have. Our staff is tremendous. I think I would challenge any of the local engineering firms to compete against our staff at any time.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, please.
Rich, can you explain again the big sign going westbound on High Street before the underpass, the big one? What will it be telling us?
It will be used primarily for traffic congestion. The thought was when Spooky Nook was having major events, we could give, not any directions for Spooky Nook, but give people time, the time it would take for them to drive either using MLK or using High Street to North B Street and use that route, so we can give them their option as to how fast it will take them or how much time it will take them to get to either of those locations.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
But we'll also use it for other events, especially, I'm hopeful that it's complete by the beginning of October, so we can also use it to alert motorists about the upcoming closure for the Operation Pumpkin.
Great, thank you.
Is it, is it able to be used now, or is it still in the testing state?
It's, no, it's, it hasn't been electrically wired yet, we're still working on that piece of it.
Anyone else on council? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Now go to the audience of citizens, individuals who wish to speak, may make comments during this part of the agenda, or may speak when the item comes up for a vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to address city council are required to sign this blue public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up to five minutes, and the first person I see is Ryan Herring. I mispronounced your name, I apologize. Come up to the podium, give us your name and your address, please.
Name's Ryan Herring, live in 940 Core One Avenue. So coming here to address the public about my situation with the inaction of our Social Security Building over by Home Depot, bypass four and Princeton Road. I, as a child, I was, I had two brain operations and had two brain tumors removed, and I attempted to start working in my early twenties, and I was, I'd lost a few jobs, got fired for forgetting something, and I ended up filing for disability, was on disability from November '09 through July of last year, and during, during my timeframe of on it, I was, you're able to work part-time because you can't really make it on a thousand dollars a month or eleven hundred dollars a month. So I worked, was working at Domino's and staying under my budget for the math I was doing, and all of a sudden, one day, I was out of my uncle's property, and I didn't get a deposit, and was wondering why, and they said that I went over. So I just pretty much came up, thought I went over, and I reapplied, reapplied, and the first time I reapplied, the, they said they didn't have my application, my reapplication. Sat there, and they looked around, they finally found it, it was sitting on one of the workers'
Security Building over by Home Depot, bypass four and Princeton Road. I, as a child, I was, I had two brain operations and had two brain tumors removed and I attempted to start working in my early twenties and I was, I'd lost a few jobs, got fired for forgetting something and I ended up filing for disability, was on disability from November 09 through July of last year. And during, during my timeframe of on it, I was, you're able to work part-time because you can't really make it on $1,000 a month or $1,100 a month. So, I worked, was working at Domino's and staying under my budget for the math I was doing and all of a sudden, one day, I was out of my uncle's property and I didn't get a deposit and was wondering why and they said that I went over. So, I just pretty much came up, thought I went over and I reapplied, reapplied and the first time I reapplied, the, they said they didn't have my application, my reapplication. Sat there and they looked around, they finally found it, it was sitting on one of the worker's desk. I don't know if he liked my signature, wanted it as a desk ornament or something, but everything was good there, waited about three, four weeks, went there again, checked the status because calling, you know, waiting on hold for 45 minutes and stuff, I just figured, go ahead and, and I actually handed my application to an individual rather because I didn't trust the drop box. They told me that they did not have my application. So, with my disability, I have short-term memory issues and I forget things and very easily, it's very hard to stay focused. So, I had somebody help me fill out the paperwork each time and, you know, it's, it's novel. So, filled it out, did the waiting game, okay, we'll go check the stats again. They lost it again. They lost my reapplication a total of five times and my credit went from, I'm sure you guys know how much your credit has to be to get four and a half percent interest on a vehicle, but my credit was perfect and I was wanting to be able to help my children start their credit like my grandmother did mine, but now I, I mean, I'm 44 years old, who wants to start over on the credit or even life anyways? And so, I actually got some hoping news today or promising news. I drove all the way out to Batavia to a different location and my, with the help of my ex-wife, she helped me and the guy, we got the paperwork filled out, but I forgot the part, the first part, the Social Security, they claimed that I went over $41,000 on the amount I wanted to make.
There are, there are strict rules in, in Social Security, but there are lawyers who specialize in Social Security that you could probably talk to.
I did.
Has the City of Hamilton caused any kind of issues which have caused you to not get Social Security or frustrated you in the process?
I, I never went over on the amount I wanted to make. They claimed that I owed them $41,000 and I had an attorney through Legal Aid look at these numbers and said.
I don't think the City of Hamilton did anything.
No, not City of, City of Hamilton, Social Security Building.
Okay. We have local government, us, the city managers, administration and all of our city professionals, we don't get involved in the Social Security process from application to acceptance to denial to appeals to possibly getting it after appeal. But we, we don't, we are not involved in that. That's, that's federal. Might have some state stuff too, but, but, so even your reporting income is something which doesn't go through us to pass it on.
Well, I was really want to do is just pretty much to let the public aware of their inaction there and the fact that they're, and I, and the, the security guard actually told me to, told everybody that if you have a problem, contact your congressman, which I contacted Congressman. And one lady asked me, or she said, I don't even know the number, so I looked up, was given her the phone number and so, and the guard asked me to leave. But I told him, I said, as a private citizen, you yourself as a taxpayer should be just as irritated as I am and we are. This building to be this big, have 25 windows and only three are working.
Well.
Let's make a snow cone box and make four windows on, you know, one on each side and, I mean, I.
We, we've all heard what you've had to say. I know we're all taking note of it and I hope, I hope it works out for you. You really do, okay?
There was also one other thing is it's the corner of Chase and Zimmerman, I believe.
Okay.
When you're turning on the road heading, that would be heading south on Zimmerman, turning right on Chase, there's vehicles, a red truck parked there, it does not move, it's in a bad spot at times, you have, it's a very, a blind spot, truck around a corner and you got cars flying up on you on Chase, but a truck doesn't move and I think that motorcycle doesn't either. But what's irritating about it is my brother was actively working on his vehicle about four years ago and he got a letter in the mail.
Okay.
Not his vehicle, but that car, that truck does not.
What's the address? What's, is it a Chase address or Zimmerman address?
I'm not sure. It's right there on the, that would be, if you're heading north on, on Zimmerman and Chase is on the left, it'd be the house on the north side of Chase.
Okay.
Red, red Ford.
Red Ford?
Okay. You know, Ford, it's a yard ornament anyways, but it's not in the yard, it's in the road.
Okay. We'll take a look at that.
All right.
Good luck with your Social Security issues.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, Brian. Ryan. Someone wants to talk about stormwater and I've got down, is it George?
About 10 rides and I got.
Oh, that's okay. Tell you what, yeah, good idea. I just got Ryan a suggestion. Can you give him the microphone? Thank you.
This is all right, Josh?
There you go, sir.
Hi there. I am Gene Steele. I'm, live at 54 West Persimmon Drive and my concern tonight is waste of stormwater. When that subdivision was started back in 1994, Stonewall Builders and the City of Hamilton agreed that Hickory Woods HOA would pay for all repairs and maintain our own stormwater. And we're being billed from the City of Hamilton, $5 a month for stormwater and I just wondered why.
Okay, maybe we can get an answer from that. Is it $5 per month?
Yes.
Is that that particular fee that all of us pay?
That's talking, 75 homes, $5 a month, $60 a year.
That's your, that's your question then, right? That you want to have answered?
Why are we paying both?
Okay. Can anybody here answer his question right now or would like to get him an, an answer?
Yeah, we discussed it previously, but I mean, I provided you additional information. I lived, spoke to you.
Yeah, you did. And why didn't you tell me about that?
I have to get all the particular details. It includes, it's more than just the stormwater itself.
Yeah, we went through that. The first person I talked to said, City of Hamilton charges everybody. Correct? Or your guy down below you?
That, yeah, it wasn't me, but yeah.
Then he said, well, we'll have a teleconference with you. His boss and I'd say, that's you. And then I explained to you and the other guy, I said, we supply our own stormwater. And he told me, well, that covers other things also. That covers street cleaning and leaf collection, correct? Do we get any of that?
I believe you do.
No, we don't.
Mr. Steele, I, I think that was created for those special projects which you probably benefit as a citizen who uses our streets and the like.
Okay. If that's the case, do you go out city limits on St. Heather Road and all them people that's using the streets in the City of Hamilton, do you charge them?
I, I think it was a way to spread the cost of important projects and, but you're talking, Edwin Porter is, is our, our.
I've talked to him.
Executive Director of Infrastructure and.
Because then he told me, after I told him that everything we don't get, he said, well, we gotta maintain the creek. Well, that's when I just told him, you're just bullshitting me now and I hung up on you.
Well, sir, we, we don't like hanging up. Is it the way to get all your questions answered? If you want us to go ahead and send you a, a report where that money goes, I think we could probably get you a report.
Well, I want to know why I'm getting billed $5 a month for something I have to pay for myself because we've had to repaint, repair our storm sewers down there ourselves coming out of our budget.
Mr. Steele, I've got an idea. What, hold on a second, I've got an idea. What if we, Mr. Porter, send all of council and you some kind of a letter which explains what that $5 has been used for and how it could benefit someone like you? Is it a program or a development that doesn't have it?
It has never been used in Hickory Wood subdivision, nothing. We're lucky to get a patrol car down in there.
No, I.
That's a different issue, I understand.
I would, I would like to do this, Mr. Steele, I'd like that. Mr. Porter, do a report for all of council, city manager and you and any residents of Hickory Wood subdivision who want to know more about it. I, I believe we all learned something from it. Okay, would you allow us to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it'll solve anything.
Well, it's going to educate all of us and we may have some further questions about it after we get that report.
Now, does the City of Hamilton have retention ponds?
Yeah.
Why do we have to maintain a retention pond when the City of Hamilton don't? That costs us money too.
Well, it's a benefit, your, your market value of your home is to have, not have flooding in areas.
Where are we going to have flooding?
Well, all I'm saying is.
We're a small community.
All I'm saying is there's, there's engineering principles and purposes and reasons why there is, but I want to try and take care of one thing at a time that's that $5 because that's been on for maybe 15 years or so and I just think it'd be good for all of us to get a report on council and, and for you and some of your neighbors in that subdivision to get a report of what's going on with that $5 and that's what I would like to see happen here.
Okay, could you find out why we have to maintain a retention pond?
As a, as a.
No water runs in that attention, retention pond except for what goes down the storm sewer.
Well, that's, that's.
And how that's going to keep you from flooding.
Mr. Porter is, is going to be able to explain that to us as well in this, in this report and I appreciate him doing that for, for us and, and for the residents of Hickory Wood subdivision.
Okay.
Now, you're fit, what's, you're 54, what's your actual street address? I mean, your street name.
West Persimmon.
That's right, West Persimmon, that's right, Persimmon. Okay.
And one other thing, I called about a ditch in front of our driveway. Actually, it's Hickory Woods Drive.
Okay.
Back years ago, City Hamilton or a utility company run a line and they busted up the concrete. They didn't give it time to settle, they poured the concrete and now we've got about two or three inches there. Our Hickory Woods people tried to repair it the best they could. I called on that and when I called, everybody said, that's your business now, it's been too long.
Well, tell you what.
That's your fault.
Mr. Steele, let's, let's see if Mr. Vaynerhorst here, who's acting as our city manager, can maybe take a look into, into that issue in, in your subdivision.
Okay.
All right.
One more thing.
Well, I let you talk more than five minutes already and then we've interfered, we've interfered with you.
I'll call back next month.
Okay. And you'll get that report by next month too, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steele. Last, we have Bob Harris.
Excuse me, sir. All right, man. Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street, President of Southeast Civic Association, which covers the second and the fourth ward. Good evening to council and the audience of citizens. This evening, I would like to get some feedback, which we've been addressing just about every month, on our street paving. I did get a sheet of information that said that South Front Street had been paved. I remember South Front Street being paved some years ago from Pershing down to Knights Bridge. We were scheduled to have South Front Street from the railroad tracks to Pershing done last year. However, it was supposed to be done this year, kick the can down the road and now this year, we're kicking the can to, you know, 2024. I, I believe that I made it very clear that there's $1.2 million for street paving in the second ward. I would like to see that money spent and the streets paved within the next one to three years and my reason is very clear. We did a street levy. I promoted that street levy and I want to know what that money is doing, where it's sitting and how soon we can get the streets paved, also for the fourth ward. Now, we've got Pershing, we got from Pershing going north to the railroad tracks. I want to know that that is going to be done in 2024. I did not see that on the streets that I looked at that were paved and that were going to be paved. I spent some time along with the city and some other community leaders and we did every street in the second ward and we graded those streets from one to 10. We did every street in the fourth ward and we graded those streets from one to 10. So, we have the data that we need. My concern is that we get it done as soon as possible because I know if we don't, within the next six years or so, we're going to be facing another levy for streets. Now, there are people that ask me why our streets have not been done. They say to me, well, we can do the streets on the west side for spooky nukes, but we can't do the streets in our community. Our community has some streets that haven't been paved in 50, 60, 70 years. Someone else approached me and said, why is it that Fairfield has better streets to travel than we have in Hamilton? I don't have those answers, so I'm asking council that we, we put something on the table that we can count on and we can hold the city accountable for. Now, having said that, I want to move a little bit further and I'll wait on your answers before I leave the podium. Last time I was here, I talked about council in itself. I, I talked about Councilman Lauer and the time that he, he has put in to address the issues in the community, the people he went and sat down with. I understand what time is. Time is something that we can't get back and so for me, I want to see a measurable difference. And in saying that, I'd like to see the city, you know, grow in all areas at the same rate. And so, I'd like to see council out in the communities and, you know, talking to the people and always interviewing people to see what it is that they want in their communities. We do the surveys, but when you want to run for office, you, you go out and you campaign. Now, one of the complaints in the second ward is that we don't see the council people campaigning in our area. My response is, well, have you looked at how many people turn out to vote? We can't put it all on council, but I am saying to you that we'd like to see your face in the place and if you feel uncomfortable, let me know. I will, I will go with you. I know some of everybody in the neighborhood and I grew up in the second ward, so it, it doesn't bother me. I'm simply saying the more we see of you, the more we think of you. The less we see of you, we don't think of you. And for me, the way I look at things, nothing personal and I, I say it out loud, if council's not doing what you think they should be doing and not represent, representing you, vote them out. I think that's fair and hey, there's a lot of people on council that I like, but I think that we ought to do as much representation as we can from each council person if they just take two of the 17 neighborhoods and get out in the neighborhoods and share their information because there's some things that we could do from the things that we learned in all neighborhoods. So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm going to turn this mic back over to you because I know you've got some answers for me because, because if you don't, I know you know where to find them.
Well, Bob, first off, thank you for being a leader in the city. You have for a number of years. You've been a resource. You've been a source of telling us what's going on and I appreciate that. Now, one thing you said, I just want to correct right now, street levy dollars aren't being used for Spooky Nook area.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I said that people said that the streets were paid for spooky nukes.
Okay.
I didn't say that the street level dollars were being used for that, so I, I wanted to correct you on that.
If you, if you, if you didn't say it, I apologize for saying you did say it, but I want to make sure that, that's a misconception out there, that a lot of people think that. But our residential services department has, has some, some material to look at online or on paper which shows where those dollars are being spent and you'll, you'll see that it's, it's being spread around. And have you, have you seen like within the last month, some of the material that shows that in graphs and maps and all that kind of stuff? Have you seen that yet, Bob?
Um, I may have, but, but we've talked about what makes sense. Um, I may have, but, but we've talked about what makes sense in, in terms of, you know, paving our streets, and we talked about sewage and water pipes and things of that nature. I, I, I do understand that. One of the things I don't understand, we paved Monument and Grand Circle. Those streets, Stevens, those streets have the least amount of usage. And so when we have streets that are 60, 70 years and they haven't been addressed or paved, that raises a big question.
Right. And I, and I appreciate what you're saying, and we've got to wrap this up. But, but I think, I mean, what I want to see is, and I'm sure our engineer, Rich Engel, our city engineer, is going to be able to provide counsel with, he already probably has, it's just stuck in my email somewhere, some of the future streets that might answer some of your questions about more, multiple, streets are used more being paved. I mean, I, I'm sure there's been surveys out there, and some of the streets you've talked about, I'm sure, are, are on the list or going to be soon on the list. I look forward to getting that information again from Mr. Engel, because like I said, it probably had it buried in my emails. So, stay tuned and, and keep the dialogue open, okay?
Well, I just want to make sure, we spent the time, I want to spend the dime to make those things happen before we have another levy. So, any way you can help me with that?
Sure.
I'll embrace that help.
Keep the dialogue open and stay tuned, and I'm sure you'll see some of the streets that you have in mind being looked at and taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. That takes care of our audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes staff reports, caucus reports. I mean, the whole's a chance for city council to hear some projects and developments that are coming up in the future, both on our agendas as well as actually happening. And so I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Mab, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:56. Now, we have a caucus agenda with five items, and I believe one of them has to be taken off the caucus agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, sir. We would request a motion to pull agenda item number two from the caucus agenda.
Your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by council member Pullman, to take number two off the agenda and have it be read, have it be discussed, read, and voted separately from the other caucus agenda items. Is that a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, roll call vote on that, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted at 7:0.
So that is going to be polled, and the, and the discussion on that will take place. Let's just go ahead and do that first. And I believe we're gonna have Dave Jones present on that one, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
If we can make a note on the record that council member Lauer is gonna recuse himself from this item.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Here, we're going to number two.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Dave Jones, I'm the finance director for the city. And we're proposing the fifth supplemental appropriation for 2023, and I've noted significant items on this. First off, in the general fund, you'll see just over $893,000. That's a Hamilton Fire Department retention bonus. It's funded completely through State of Ohio grants. And we've also got a half a million dollars as a payment to the Butler County TID. It's for North Hamilton Crossing design fees. Those are items out of the general fund. The Hamilton Capital Improvement Debt Service Fund, which is the general funds, you know, used by the general fund for the capital and debt service. We're doing $387,000, almost $388,000 for safe routes to school, Van Hook Phase Two. I think you heard Rich mention that in the engineering update. Most of it's covered by a grant, but that is our match on that. We're doing about $149,000 for the fire department. It's a self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA. It's a renewal and repair, about $135,000, and then $100,000 for gas and water main extension at the new Criminal Justice Center. Finally, in the refuse fund, we've got $400,000 for landfill remediation at the former landfill site, and that's per EPA requirements. Is there any questions on those?
Any questions or comments? Half of those projects have grants.
Yes.
That's an example of what we do.
Correct.
Okay. No further questions from council? I guess we'll go ahead and vote on this one, is that, we voted the conclusion?
Well, right now, we're recessed in the regular meeting, so if you want, if you want to reconvene the regular meeting to vote on that item, you can do that, and then you can go back to the committee of the whole, whatever, what-
It keeps them coming in and out all the time.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and just reconvene the-
Is your motion that we reconvene the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Vice mayor Ryan, seconded by council member Fear. Roll call vote on that to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mab?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted at 6:0.
Okay, is there a motion that council receive that particular report? Deny of number two and concurrence recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Mab, seconded by council member Vaughn. That be a vote, both votes, is it a roll call?
Can we do the vote, a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on that, then, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mab?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6:0.
Okay, we went back on record at 7 o'clock. I'll accept the motion to regular meeting be recessed again and the committee of the whole take place again.
So moved.
Second. Motion by council member Pullman, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. Roll call, roll call vote again?
Yes, please.
Roll call vote. Okay, roll call vote on that, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mab?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 6:0.
Okay, so we go back and the committee of the whole at 7 o'clock.
So, this one is for a bond anticipation note, and I know the $49,750 is, is a lot higher with the council mayor and acting city manager Vaynerhorst gets seated. But I know the, the $49,750 is a lot higher than your written report. That's because we identified some money throughout our, our current budget meetings are going on, so there is a new money piece to this. The original bond anticipation note was taken out last December, and if you remember, a bond anticipation note is a one-year note that we typically use when we're either gathering costs for a project and don't know the final cost, so we can go to permanent financing with that. Or in this case, it's used because of the interest rate environment. We found a pretty favorable rate on this, and then, you know, we're hoping that rates will drop in the future before we do go to permanent financing. The renewal piece of this is the $34,750, and you'll see that that is for the Criminal Justice Center, $23 million, that'll be repaid by the general fund. Tyler'sville Road, I think Rich mentioned that also, that's $2.25 million repaid by the general fund. Rivers Edge Amphitheater Roof and Repaid Roof and Improvements is $1.34 million repaid by the general fund. Gas and Water Line Relocation, I think the majority of that was at Station, Fire Station, Proposed Fire Station 26. It's also repaid by the general fund. We've got some stormwater system improvements. The stormwater repays and wastewater improvements, $3.3 million repaid by the wastewater fund. And that was passed last year by you guys, and we took it out in December. It matures in December of this year. We're starting the process now because there's two readings, it's not an emergency ordinance, so we'll have the referendum period. Here is the new money piece. Again, this is an amount not to exceed. I've got $15 million in there because we are working with bond attorneys and, and working rapidly. That actually totals up to a little under $11 million. We only borrow what we need, but you guys authorize the amount not to exceed. We've got $5 million for a new water tower. We've got $3 million for a water plant, solid contact basin overhaul, a plant filter rebuild and influit valve replacement of a million. The water model, Rich mentioned that one also, $600,000. Plant improvements for a roof replacement, well rehab, $580,000, and then water main replacement of $500,000. Again, we won't be going out till probably Thanksgiving and into December, so if we identify more, identify more items, we could also have those in the actual ordinance. With this, there's three separate ordinances to give you a heads up. You have one for the band that we're renewing. You have one for the water system, and then the Ohio revised code mandates that we combine all those back into one ordinance. So you will see just, you will see three separate ordinances with this. Finally, like I said, we've, we've got a very favorable rate on this. We're projecting a coupon rate of 4.6%. We expect these bonds to sell at a premium, which means they'll suffer more than the actual principal value, so that'll usually cover the underwriter attorney fees and all that, and it gives you a yield of about 4%. Star Ohio, which we have quite a bit of our money in, it's a state money market program. We're getting 5.5%, so basically, this is interest-free money. You don't get to keep the spread between the 5.5 and the 4.6%, unfortunately. This is a tax-exempt issue, that does have to be refunded to the IRS. This is a program through the state of Ohio. It's the Ohio Market Access Program. Again, we'll reevaluate where rates go, where these projects go in 2024, and, you know, maybe we go to permanent financing, or we can again renew this in December of '24. Are there any questions on this one?
No. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
For record, council member Lauer committed 7:01 and heard that entire presentation.
Coming next on the caucus agenda, for agenda items three and four, will be Liz Hayden, our planning director.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. The first item that the planning department has on your agenda is a proposal for Crawford Avenue vacation. If you can look at this visual, you'll see that it is not the actual, truly the street being proposed to be vacated. It is like about a 15-foot portion of the right-of-way directly adjacent to the, the properties to the south of the street, and there's been a lot of work and discussion going on in this area, and this portion was identified as not being needed for the street and could be utilized privately by the adjacent property owners for their needs. Do you have any questions about this?
Questions? Thank you.
The second item is also a vacation. It's an alley vacation on Con, at, for Con Avenue Alley. This request came from a concerned resident who lives adjacent to the property, and they're having a number of issues back in this alley area, and it's not, if you were in the backyard, it would not look like an alley to your eye. It's grass, it's a grassy path that looks like it's an extension of people's property, and she requested that it be vacated for safety purposes, and this, so this proposal's coming to you as the first step of that process. Any questions about this one?
Questions?
Thank you.
And lastly, on the caucus agenda, for agenda item number five, we'll have a verbal presentation by our executive director of public safety, Mr. Scott Scrimmisi.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. This is a request for council to waive the advertisement for bids for the Flock Safety ALRP cameras. It's a proprietary software that's, they're the sole supplier. It's 24 cameras throughout the city, a two-year contract. It's $154,250. That's 100% funded by state grant.
And these, these are very useful in law enforcement?
They're amazing.
Thank you for getting these. Any questions, please?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Sure.
So, where will, I don't want to do it specific, but how are they, the locations chosen?
So, we, we pick, we try to get every entrance and exit to the city. We'll have cameras on the bridge catching east and westbound traffic there throughout the city and then in high crime areas.
And they record every vehicle?
They do.
Is that what happens? Okay, okay.
And that we're surrounded by other agencies that have those cameras. So, it's a, it's a complete package that's pretty much throughout Butler County, and we've just been using the technology that's supplied from the other cities around us right now without the cameras, and I can't tell you how many crimes we've solved. It's, it's great technology.
Okay, I had made an assumption that, that we already had these cameras, so that was a wrong assumption.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, pardon my voice. Scott, would the, would the cameras be recording live, so there's someone that would see that as it happens? Or is that, is that-
So, we could put, to give you an example, we could put the license number of a stolen car in the, in the system, and that car passes through one of these cameras, it can pop up on the cell phone of a police officer real lifetime, the direction they're going, the location. They're amazing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
Scott, are these cameras permanently affixed to something?
They are.
Can you move them around?
So, yeah, and councilman Vaughn may be thinking about, we had, we had LPR card readers on some of our cruisers. That's actually how, one of the keys that we solved the Wilmerton homicide with, that one of our cruisers happened to drive by Peter Avenue and pick up the license tag of the suspect's vehicle that we went back and found the day before it was gonna be eliminated because of the retention policy. So, we had those on our cruisers. These are fixed. They also have a product that you can put in addition to on your cruisers, but we're just going with the 24 fixed cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations.
Thank you. I'll accept the motion that the committee of the whole be closed?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by vice mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:10. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by council member Mab, seconded by council member Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moeller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7:0.
If they'll accept the motion regarding those items?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur in their recommendations.
Second.
This made by council, council member Pullman, seconded by council member Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:11. We now go into the public hearing part of the agenda. Now, set the motion to regular meeting be recessed and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
By vice mayor Ryan, seconded by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. We go into the public hearing at 7:12. Please read a public hearing into the record.
A public hearing regarding a preliminary and final development plan for 64 North Brookwood Avenue preliminary and final PED plan application and specific use request to allow self-storage facility use on property zone BPD business plan development with three variances for WH LLC applicant.
Okay. Okay, we just read into the record the public hearing item involving 64 North Brookwood Avenue. Is anybody in the audience which is to be heard about that development at 64 North Brookwood Avenue? I've got Mark Masterson first, then we'll go to the second person. Give us your name and your address, please.
Mayor, council, Mark Masterson. Live at 16300 Country Road, 455, Unit 510, Mont Verde, Florida. Represent for WH. We urge you guys to, to approve the preliminary and final plan development to allow for self-storage use of this facility. And I know there might be some details that are being worked out. And the last time I was up here on the meeting, August 23rd, I believe there were some questions that were asked to me. asked to me relating to costs associated with some of the paving, there was, you know, and the out parcels. I was able to get some of those answers, I don't know if you want me to go over those now, I could certainly do so. A question that was posed to me was, what are the costs associated with just patching and sealing those two out parcels? There's an estimate out there around 100, it'll be around $112,000. The cost to repave the two out parcels with an inch, inch and a half asphalt layer would be around $254,000. The cost to completely turn those two acre parcels into green space would be around $540,000. So, those answers to some of the questions that were posed in the August 23rd meeting. I was also able to get some pictures of some facilities that we've operated and provided those to Liz, and I think she may or may not have shared those with you, but also, if there's anybody who has any other questions regarding this, this proposal, I'd be able to field that for you.
Well, you hang around, because there might be some more discussion about this, we might have to call you back up again.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Second, I see Dale McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council staff, we appreciate all that you do for us. As you know, most of you know.
What's your name and your address?
Oh, I'm sorry?
We know you, but.
Yeah. 43 Laurel Lane, Hamilton. We, as most of you know, I served on the planning commission for a bit, and we went through this pretty, very seriously when it was presented to us. We have approved another version, and properties are sold, et cetera, you all know that story. But I've, I saw the last planning meeting on Facebook, and I watched this particular portion a couple of times and decided, well, you know, I apologize first that the planning commission may have not sent you, you know, maybe some mixed signals from repaving versus patch and seal, okay? I have a proposal because we're very frustrated over the last five years or so with the conditions that have continued to decline in the parking lot out there, that because the businesses out there, they still, our parking lots are still being used, even though there's only one real business in the, in the parking area. But people drive across it to get where they want to go in the parking lot, et cetera. So, if I may, I have a little schematic, guess a motion to take it or?
A motion to receive.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Fear to receive these documents from McAllister, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
What was it? Sorry?
It will be accepted and be passed around right now for the record.
I spent a little time, apologize for my, I didn't do too well in art when I was a kid, but if you would take a look at it, we aren't, we are not, I think I'm speaking for, I'm speaking for myself, I can't necessarily speak for all of, all of the planning commission. We are cognizant of the, the cost related to that, and we, we did talk about a lot of things, but it was paving and resealing mostly, we want the parking lot fixed and taken care of. And so, no, that's not actually our job, but it's something, before we approve a plan and send it to you guys, we should be good stewards of, of the planning commissions, if you want to call powers or whatever, recommendations to you guys to look at. So, if you'll notice here on the, on this schematic, there is a newly approved parking area at the end of that building that is currently, that's been, the rest has been torn down, so at that terminus of the building, there is a parking lot that is going in there, we approve that, okay? And then regarding the repaving, so there's going to be pavers out there, is number one. So, looking, going out there and have met, met with one of you out there, just to take a look, there, we'll go with parking lot number two, which is closest to Wendy's. That front area, you can see the orange block there, that's a proposal from, from me to you guys, speaking from my Spanish point on planning commission, have that repaved. That's where all the whole majority of the holes are, okay? And they're, they're deep and can cause some damage. And then over on the other side of O'Reilly's, mark number three, there, there is paving done on the front section there where the cars are parked, but it didn't get all of it done. So, this is wide open, it's, I don't know how wide it is, but the, what I, I walked off the other day is about 60 to 65 feet, and the whole width of the parking lot ought to be paved as well. Patching that is just putting a Band-Aid on a big, big wound. So, that, those are my thoughts. The rest in pink, patch and reseal. So, a little about what we want, a little bit what Mr. Masterson wants as far as cost savings for his company, but these are the back portions of the parking areas. If they're sold, they might be redeveloped out back there, but if they're not, you know, we will have to force the buyers to do the same thing. He can pass the cost on to the buyers if he wishes, but we would like to see these fixed. As, and I know it's been a frustration for planning commission, so that's all I have. Any questions?
Mayor.
Please.
Dale, have you had this discussion with Mr.?
No, I did not know he was here until I got here.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I will give him a copy of this, and, and we'll talk about it maybe potentially after the meeting, I'm very open to that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
Mr. McAllister, you, you do feel that patch and seal will work on the areas two and three that you have gone off?
Well, there's one portion that's pretty bad, but that's not owned by Mr. Masterson's, his company. It's the one close to Pizza Hut, and to drive in there, if you were to turn left immediately when you go in the parking lot in front of the old Pizza Hut, that's owned by Skyline or, or maybe a franchise or somebody that we approved for the new Skyline.
Gold Star?
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, you're right. We want to get that right.
I think that this property is, is very frustrating for the city, is I feel this is one of the properties that is kind of holding us back a little bit as far as moving forward, because this is a large piece of property that needs to be developed rather quickly, and whatever we can do to get this moving, I will have other questions as we proceed, but this is frustrating, and I'd like to see this piece of property for the surrounding businesses and our community get fixed up as soon as possible.
Yeah, I would, I would love to see nice development over the whole development. I used to have an office across the street from it, and it's, it hurts my heart to see it just sit there empty, grass and weeds and the rest, you know? I think we, it's a vital place, it's one of our last sizable areas for development, and, you know, I have my thoughts, but that's not part of.
Yes, sir.
My, my responsibilities.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Just a quick question, Mr. McAllister, the blue newly approved parking, do you know who that, what that parking is for, why it's going in there?
I believe it's for Chinese lantern, the parking right in front of that, not Chinese, Golden Dragon.
Uh huh.
The parking behind O'Reilly's, it isn't actually owned by this company, although it's been parked, people have been parking there for 15, 20 years.
Yeah.
So, I would assume it's for their recognizing that, that it's for them. Mr. Masterson might be able to tell you better.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Pullman.
Dale, I've got a correction on this, that, Daniel, can you pull 764, page 764 of the agenda up, the picture? I think it's on the, the parking lot, I think that's what the page number is.
Yeah, I can do that.
Where you got right here on this, that is not up to the light pole. I just kind of looked down here real close, and light poles were there.
Well, I see, I saw the shadows.
Yeah, and so that actually needs to go back, and that actually lines up, and thanks for the, the pass, used my ruler here, was great, but it actually needs to go back a little bit to, the light poles are back here.
Yeah.
And I'm looking in our agenda, looking at that picture right here, that's the worst part of it, and walking out there and looking at everything, I gotta apologize to Mr. Masterson about what I said about the area coming in, that has been repaved, and that was my mistake, it is smooth, and, you know, coming in, it's nice job on that, but I will have to say that I have to agree with Mr. McAllister on the, this lot number two that you have on here, you, you gotta pave up to the poles there, that is, that, on this picture, it's a wreck, and I don't know if Daniel can show it, but that's really bad right there, and I think that should be paved up there, and I'm okay with sealing and paving the other. I'm kind of up in the air about the other part of it on number three, I'm kind of up in the air on that, it would be nice to have that paved, but that is behind the light poles. There's some big holes back over there, but I still don't think it's as bad as over on the front side of number two there, or the backside of number two, I would say, coming from your building up to the light pole. And if, if you did it up to the light pole, you look straight across there, that's going to be uniform all the way across, and there, you know, there's people that's going to use your building that are going to park there. And I, I just, I, that, I don't see patch and sealing this part of it, looking at this picture, and walking it, I don't see this patch, patching and sealing this part of it is going to do it any good. It's, there's awful deep holes, and it's broken around the drain, it's been patched numerous times over there, but, you know, I, I do agree with you, just, you're up there selling two and three, lots two and three, if it was me, I, I would want to just patch and seal it until it got sold, you know? I, I think, you know, that's a good idea, in, in my opinion, but I think bare minimum is number two needs to come up to the light, light post. He's got that line drawn a little bit shallow, but it needs to go, if you follow the other line from the back of the orange drawing over there, but I think that one, in my opinion, needs to be done regardless, it needs to be paved. That's bare minimum, okay?
Councilmember Pullman, can you confirm the page number one more time, please?
I think it's 764, according to my computer here, so.
That's.
It's a really good picture, it shows the light pole base right here, I mean, but I'm looking at it right here, and it says on the PDF, it says 764.
Okay.
Seven.
So, I don't have 764, I've got, I may have a different page, but I can still run through those attachments.
Yeah, it's, it's attached to that, the photographs, yeah, I don't know what's going on with this, Daniel, because it's not changing numbers, sorry. That's 764 pages in the agenda anyway, so that's what that is. But under that document, you'll see a bunch of pictures, and scroll down quite a bit, it, it's, it's down there quite a bit. Keep going, keep going, I'll tell you when to stop. Keep going, keep going. Hold on, Mr. Fear? No, go down, another one.
Where in the light?
No.
No, you're fine.
You'll see, you'll see the, I think it's after this, no, keep going, right there, that's it. If we could blow that picture up, there, at the bottom-left corner, you'll see the light post base, and Dale's a little, the drawing is a little shallow of that, but that's what I'm talking about, I walked that, and that's pretty bad. And that, you can see the cold patches on there, it, it's just a mess right there, and if you ran from that light post all the way up to your good pavement up there, then it's uniform all the way across, then you could patch and seal the rest. Again, I think bare minimum, we need to do that.
That's all I have, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale, for your analysis. Obviously, this part of west part of town, Main Street area, we go there, visitors go there, it's an area which needs to look good for all of us and those who visit us. Thank you for your, for your assistance in this.
Is there anyone else that signed up?
No one else signed up.
I just wanted to say, from a staff perspective, that, you know, we're available for questions, but also, I'm sorry that we weren't able to get you more information ahead of this meeting, but we are still working on it, and we hope that, we plan to get you more information in the next week so that you're prepared to have a more concrete discussion next meeting.
It's just a first reading tonight, second reading and vote is the next council meeting. All right. Anyone else wish to make any comment at this time? Not, I'll jump to anyone in council wish to make comment or make a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion, Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan, close to public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:31. I'll accept the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Nabb, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, now accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. That motion is carried at 7:32, we go to pending legislation. And Mr. City Clerk, you want to make mention about Agenda Item Number 7, please?
Of course. So, for Agenda Item Number 7, at our previous city council meeting, council adopted a motion to table this item, city staff is still working on this subject matter, and we're requesting to keep this item on the table and simply skip this item for this meeting, if that's fair.
Okay, that takes care of number 7, we need no vote on that. We go to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the second reading of an ordinance involving the East Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan.
An ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, by adding the East Avenue Corridor redevelopment plan to the plan. City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion, Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Question or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nabb?
Yes.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, by amending Section eleven thirty, Establishment of Use Districts and Subdistress, Section twelve fifty, Zoning Land Use Chart, Permitted Uses, Conditional Uses, Accessory Uses, Section thirteen hundred, Conditional Uses and Specific Uses, Section fourteen hundred, Accessory Uses, Section eighteen hundred, Residential Design Standards, Section nineteen hundred, Commercial Design Standards, Section twenty-nine hundred, Flood Damage Reduction, Section thirty-five hundred, Mobile Food Service Operation, Section thirty-nine hundred, Glossary, Section four thousand, Administration and Enforcement, Section forty-one hundred, Board of Zoning Appeals, Section forty-two hundred, Board of Zoning Appeals Powers and Duties, and Section forty-five hundred, Fee Schedule, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pollan.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Pollan, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Questions, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Ten, second reading of ordinance involving our home program funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to five hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four Home Investment Partnership Grant Home Program Funds, second reading.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be accepted or adopted, thank you.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, second reading of ordinance involving our CDBG program funds.
An ordinance accepting, appropriating, and budgeting up to one million six hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four Community Development Block, uh, Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Funds, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. Questions on this or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Go to Agenda Item, we go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number Twelve, prescribing ordinance involving our codified ordinances in the Housing and Property, Property Maintenance Code.
An ordinance amending Part Nineteen Housing and Property Maintenance Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, to designate the city manager as the administrator of the Housing and Property Maintenance Code, first reading.
Thank you. Go to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, prescribing ordinance involving vacating a portion of Skilman Avenue Alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of Skilman Avenue Alley between Woodland Avenue and Woodland Avenue Alley A situated in the Sixth Ward North Side, City of Hamilton, Ohio. City of Hamilton petitioner, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which is a first reading of ordinance involving that development plan at sixty-four North Brookwood Avenue.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plan for sixty-four North Brookwood Avenue, preliminary and final PD Plan Application and Specific Use Request to Allow Self-Storage, a self-storage facility use on property zone BPD Business Plan Development with three variances for WH LLC applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which is a resolution about Ohio Public Works Commission Loan Application.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of, of loan applications with Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding the twenty twenty-four PY three eight Carlton Drive Walter Water Main Replacement Project, Van Buren Drive and Van Buren Court Water Main Replacement Project, and Williams Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all the documents necessary to receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor. Vice Mayor Ryan, move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Pollan. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to a resolution on Agenda Item Number Sixteen, resolution involving Ohio Public Works Commission and a road improvement project.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of grant application with Ohio Public Works Commission relative to funding for the twenty twenty-four PY three eight Hamilton Road Improvement Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Audience's city manager, any comments from either one of our folks acting in that capacity tonight?
Yes, sir.
None? Okay. Audience of city council, board and commission reports, any comments from anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pollan.
I just wanted to say, last Friday, you, myself, Brad Baker, and my brother, we played the Inspiration Studio Golf Outing, had a, that's a great benefit fundraiser that they did, it was a very exciting day, we got to see a lot of things happen out there. And I apologize for making fun of your golf clubs, saying they were nineteen fourteen, because you corrected me, you said it probably was more like nineteen eighteen.
Yeah.
On your clubs, but it's, we had a, we had a good time, and it was just a, it's a great fundraiser, great organization. My son is one of the artists there three days a week, which I definitely support it, it's just, they, they did a great job, we had the best day, too, it was beautiful weather.
It was.
So...
Thank you for mentioning my Caddyshack putter that I use. But two things happened that day, great fundraiser.
Right.
Poor golf on my part, but you helped carry us, Councilmember Pollan, and he almost won five thousand dollars because he made a really long putt. It was, it was fun, it was a great day.
And the, the thing was, is I was second runner-up on that, and the guy that beat my putt by about a couple inches, I told him good luck, and they moved it back another fifteen feet, and this guy made it for fif, for five thousand dollars. He was so excited, I think he pulled his calf muscle, so the lease had to be deductible. So it's, but it was, it was, it was an incredible day, and it was just fun, and, yeah. And Brad corrected me, too, he said, Pollman, you should have known that was nineteen eighteen club, because they started using Hickory about then, so.
That's a great guy.
And we didn't mean to tease you too bad about it.
It's all in Hamilton, Ohio.
You actually played well, you made a bad shot, and you complained about it, and you put it right next to the hole.
Thank you.
And we said, keep hitting like that, so it was, it was a good day.
But no, it was all fun in Hamilton, Ohio, at Twin Run Golf Club.
Yeah, it was a good time.
Golf course. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay. Please go to River's Edge to go see Core Stan Jam and donate what you can. River's Edge also has the Big River Get Down coming up, another incredible event in our city. And on October seventh, German Village has an Oktoberfest coming up, and has to also celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of German Village. Food, beverages, art, music, and a cornhole tournament involving teams from various groups around the city. And city council is, I think, playing cornhole against somebody who I forgot, but we're going to try, it's a two-man team, but we're going to all be a two-man team, so they're going to, hopefully all of us who can be there can play cornhole in this tournament and bring home the cornhole winner. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Just a couple of things, it reminded me, this week is Hospitality Week in Hamilton, so enjoy all of our restaurants. A few of us up here may be guest bartending on Friday night, so take your life in your own hands when you show up at some of the bars, and you see us behind the bar. I will be one of those at Nick and Norm's Cafe Friday night, so please come out. I know we have a couple weeks yet, but Coffee with Council will be on September the thirtieth, Saturday. It's going to be at LJ Smith Park on Joe Nuxall Boulevard. Following that, immediately at eleven o'clock, Seventeen Strong is sponsoring a bike ride. It's family-friendly, there's a mile for families, and then there's twelve and a half miles for the rest of us. So I hope you will join us, there's no fee or anything, it's just a good time and enjoying our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn, for mentioning Hospitality Week. Howard gave me a call, and I will be at the, at the hub, and wherever you are at eight o'clock, we'll be at some various hubs. At eight o'clock, there's going to be a toast citywide to Hamilton of Ohio. So wherever you are at eight o'clock, whatever beverage you may have in front of you, toast Hamilton of Ohio, because we've got great things going on now, and great things going on that's going to help us in the future as well. Anyone else on council? Executive session, Mr. City Manager, acting city manager, or...
Yes, sir, there is for three reasons. One, to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employer official. To consider the purchase of property for public purposes, purposes, or for the sale of property at a competitive bidding, a premature disclosure of the information would give an unfair advantage, or, or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. And to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development.
Okay, regarding your last request for executive sessions or motion, this time regarding that particular, that executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant, or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project.
So moved.
Motion of Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Council, seconded by Councilmember Pollan, thirded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote, please.
Pollman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Mohler?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Adopted at seven forty-five, and regarding the request for executive session made by